Tacoma Park City Council to order. Little Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Here.
Councilmember Grimes.
Here.
Councilmember Mael.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
Councilmember Stevens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz will not be here this evening. He will be here next week. There are no changes to tonight's agenda. Calling out a couple of things that people might want to take note of. Next Monday, January 20th, is Martin Luther King Jr.'s holiday, so the city offices will be closed. There will be no council meeting on Monday night. Instead, the council meeting will be Tuesday, January 21st. And a reminder that among the items on that agenda are a presentation from the Nuclear Free Tacoma Park Committee, a work session discussion of proposed ethics ordinance amendments, and a work session item on council grant programs. Then Thursday night next week, Thursday, January 23rd, we have the council budget retreat at 6:00 PM. Location has been determined.
Looks like it's likely to be Montgomery College. We'll send something out this week for sure.
Okay. Then the following Thursday, February 6th, we have first of tentative Thursday evening sessions on city department roundtables with the council. And we're proposing those for the Thursday, February 6th and Thursday, February 20th. So just a heads up that those may be coming up. And a reminder that Monday, February 17th, is President's Day, so the city offices will be closed again. And the meeting will be Tuesday, February 18th. So that's a couple of kind of non-Mondays night heads up. At this point, we will have public comments on voting items on this agenda, and we will take them in order. So first up, if there's anybody who would like to comment on the agenda item number one, which is the resolution adopting a hazard mitigation plan. Anybody who would like to comment on that one? Seeing nobody for that one, we'll move to the next one. Is there any public comment on agenda item number two, which is a frustrating ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Police Employees Retirement Plan to change options available to retirees? Seeing nobody to testify on that one. The final item of our regular voting agenda this evening, is there any public comment on resolution providing for an appointment to the Emergency Preparedness Committee? Okay, seeing nobody for that, we will move on to public comments on non-voting items and anything that's not on this evening's agenda. Mr. Lovelace in the back.
Yes, my name is Pat Lovelace, your official peace delegate. 37620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Washington. I also want to remind people that, like you said, Mayor, that Monday, next Monday, is Martin Luther King's birthday. And I think since there's no meeting, people ought to become active, start getting active in what's going on in the community and world around them. I heard that Tacoma Park is having a celebration for Martin Luther King's birthday. And also, we're having a parade down in southeast Washington, D.C., down in Anacostia. And it's going to be really great. I'm going to be down at the parade. So I'd like to see if other people can do it too. You know, if I can do it. There's no reason why anybody else can do it. And this is the time we need to do it the most. You know, we're getting our rights trampled on, right and left. And I also mean that we've had our voting rights gutted. And that would make Martin Luther King roll over in his grave. You know, to have our civil rights taken away piece by piece. You know, with all these special IDs and stuff and special things to be able to get to vote. If you haven't got it, they weed you out. And I'd like to see if people can come down to the Martin Luther King. We're also going to be protesting poverty to do what we can to stop people from falling into the pool line. People have lost their unemployment benefits. And people have lost their food stamps. Meals and wheels were cut, and other benefits are getting cut. If we don't step up on it, who's to say they're not going to cut my benefits? You know, who's to say that eventually we're not going to lose Obamacare? You know, once we win it, we have to fight to keep a hold on it. So come on down to the parade on Martin Luther King Day and come out to a celebration somewhere. And tell all your friends about it. This is an important time. It's almost as important as 1965 all over again. And if I can do it, other people can do it. People are asking me, "Am I afraid of going to Anacostia because I might get hurt?" And I says, "No, I'm not afraid. I want to do it, and I want to see other people do it. You'll feel better about yourself afterwards." And also, Mayor Williams, I'd like to see what we could do to get the ward nights going again, because they were pretty popular sometimes. And I'd like to see what we could do to get them going again. Maybe they have ideas too, what we can do to make our city better. Thank you very much. Peace be with you and happy birthday, Dr. Martin Luther King. And tell everybody out there to take part in something. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there other public comments?
Roger Slegole, 6512 Allegheny. And I'm coming back to comment a little bit further on the topic that was raised last week about proposing to potential developers that they present ideas for the city-owned land at the junction. And I'm coming back because I've just been reflecting on my experience on the task force a little bit, and particularly on the work with outreach to the community that council member Daniels Cohen was so heavily involved in along with others. I just feel like it's important to come back and present again some potential concerns that the community would likely have about any development, with the idea that the city should perhaps consider whether any of these outcomes, whether there are any outcomes the city would definitely want to rule out upfront, or any outcomes that the city would definitely want to ensure upfront. And I just, I thought of four things, really. One was questions about traffic flow that the community raised. In particular, the people who live downhill behind the junction always were expressing concerns when we spoke to them about Columbia Avenue and Sycamore Avenue being adversely affected if any exit was constructed onto Columbia from a development. The second is concerns parking and the net availability of parking for other businesses in the junction after any development occurs. And to quote from our report, "We had recommended that the city ask a developer to do a multimodal study, which would measure access modes and parking demand, as well as forecast new demand associated with any redevelopment under consideration, and then coordinate planning and action with the future use of the city-owned parcels. We also recommended that when any new development or use will have an impact on parking demand, take the needs of the entire junction into consideration when determining the net change in parking associated with the new development or new use." And those are from page 62 of the report. The third item of potential concern would be the height of the building. And again, I would just say that if the city definitely wants to ensure that there's a maximum height to such a structure that might be built, it should just say that upfront. And the last concerns the wooded area. The wooded area actually comprises more than half of the overall city-owned property. And within that, the R-60 parcel is a quarter of an acre. So this was particularly of interest to people who saw that as a buffer zone for the neighborhood behind the junction. I'll finish up in just a second. In the report, we recommended, based on this community input, that the city should evaluate the degree of community interest in maintaining all or part of the wooded area prior to asking for proposals for development. And we also recommended that that R-60 parcel, the quarter acre, be preserved as a wooded area. So I just wanted to close with one question, which is whether the city has done anything to evaluate the degree of community interest in preserving or maintaining all or part of that wooded area as a wooded area. And I'm not saying any of these things to push for any outcome, but just to suggest that the city would be wise perhaps to consider if there are any outcomes that it really wants for sure, or wants to prevent for sure. Thank you.
Thanks. Is there other public comment?
I follow that up. Question, Brian.
Yeah. I mean, we're going to get to it. I wonder, the city manager, for the request for proposals, what area, we already discussed inviting potential proposers to talk about the adjoining properties, but what portion of the wooded area, if any, do you plan to include in the RFP?
The city-owned parcel is just, I think as it has been, is just defined as that land which is city-owned, so we're not making any demarcations on it. I know that there is a, I believe that at least right now in the current zoning, that wooded portion actually carries a little bit different zoning designation than some other parts of the city-owned lot. But obviously, and this is one of the things that I think we do try to, or that we will try to make clear in the solicitation, is that, you know, green space is important. Environmental sustainability is incredibly important as it relates to any potential responses that the city would be evaluating. And so it is something that we care tremendously about, and we're looking for creative and interesting proposals that would hopefully include, obviously, significant portions, if not all, of the wooded parcel.
Is there any further public comment? Seeing none, we'll move to council comments. Councilmember Simmons, did you have something?
Yes, thank you. I had two items. One is, I appreciate Mr. Lovelace mentioning the Dr. Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. Day. We have scheduled a celebration. It's actually the Tacoma United for an Engaged Community has organized a celebration for that day on Monday, the 20th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM as a service day project. People are asked to meet at the Tacoma Park Middle School on Piney Branch Road in the parking lot. They'll then proceed from there down to wooded area that's actually next to the parking lot off of Darwin Avenue at the top of the Ed Wilhelm Field. And the plan is to clear brush and other invasive plants from the area at the end of the Darwin Avenue parking lot to make way for better use of the land, and that might be better growth of the natural vegetation, or it might be for a dog park someday. People are asked to bring saws or clippers if they can, and the Tacoma United for an engaged community will be giving SSL credit for students. And then in the evening, starting at 5:00, from 5:00 until 8:00 PM, there's a potluck dinner at the Tacoma Park, or I'm sorry, at the Piney Branch Elementary School, right here next to the community center. It's a potluck supper. There's going to have Senator Jamie Raskin there speaking, and also civil rights activist Larry Rubin, immigration rights organizer Maxwell Hellman, and performances by children and youths. There'll be music and civil rights documentary film. So that's from 5:00 to 8:00 at the Piney Branch Elementary School on Monday, January 20th. If you have any questions, feel free to call me at 301-565-0190. Thank you. Or you can check with the Rec Department here. Thank you. And the other item I wanted to mention, this was for the city manager. When we first met Mr. Kenner, I had raised concern about the fading of the permanent crosswalks on Maple Avenue. Winter's going to be winding down soon, but I noticed those crosswalks are fading away pretty fast. And we have a lot of foot traffic on Maple Avenue, and so I would ask that we see what we can do. I think those were thermoplast crosswalks that were supposed to have a long life expectancy. I'm not sure they've fulfilled their promise, so I don't know whether it's to go back to them to get them repaired, or if we have to install new ones, but I would appreciate you checking that. Thank you.
Councilmember Mael.
Thank you, Mayor. Two questions for the city manager. The first is, and councilmember Simmons just reminded me of this, if at some point you could have the staff provide an update of how many visits we get to the average city council meeting, I'd just like to know about essentially use rates for our meetings like this meeting, if that's possible.
Visits here at the building, or?
No, no. No, online. Online hits to, in other words, who's watching? Is it 100, is it 1,000, is it 5, is it 50? 5 is your guess. Just Jared. I see, I get it. And my second question was concerning the hiring of a sustainability expert, and whether you could provide an update on that process and where we are. Thank you.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Pat, for reminding us about the wards nights. I thought about that and forgot to mention it. And you brought it right back up, because the ward nights are a pretty big deal, and I hope we can start them back up this spring. Maybe not while it's still possibly snowing, but in the springtime, when it's warm and toasty, if it will ever be warm and toasty again. Let's see. Ah, here we have the ever-so-informative Tacoma Park newsletter. Do not wrap a fish around this. This has got all the information you need to know about January in Tacoma Park. You don't need anything else other than this. So it goes to every house. It has all the pickups, all the garbage pickups, all that stuff. So make sure you don't throw that away. The other what's so special about Tacoma Park is Hank Prinsky. I know he's trying to sell houses, and I appreciate that, but he shares every single holiday or festival that we have in Tacoma Park in his little flyer. It's not really a flyer. You put it on your, I use this all the time. You put it on your refrigerator. It is a refrigerator magnet. Special Gold Star, Sidero Braithwaite, who didn't leave all of us hanging on the 26th and 22nd. They did double duty. Public Works did double duty. I don't know if they do it every year, but they sure as heck did it this year. They picked up both Wednesday and Thursday, on Thursday, and I appreciate that. I don't think that happens everywhere in the world. We would be covered with cardboard if it didn't. Let's see. Ah, and any of my constituents that complained about not getting information about pickup times either wrapped a fish in their newsletter, didn't bother to read, well, this is about the compost, but didn't bother to read their compost, don't open their mail. This is another one. You've got at least three bits of information via the United States Postal Service about all the pickups that were happening during this, the last couple of weeks. The, let's see. Ah, the little exchangeable baby libraries are precious, and they're gorgeous. There's one right across the street from me with all kinds of colors. It's beautiful, and I think people are using them. So that's real, I don't know whose idea that was. Do we have any idea whose idea it was?
Somebody out in the Midwest.
Oh, really? Somebody out, probably from Kansas. No, Iowa.
Iowa.
All right. Well, whatever it was, it was a great idea. And my most overwhelming Gold Stars go to all Tacoma Park for your continued support, good wishes, and care, and prayers for me. I'm overwhelmed, and thank you for so many wonderful people surrounding and caring for me, and sharing themselves and their families with me. I thank you from the bottom of my heart, and I want to remind you all that life is good. I also want to remind you, if you really want your heartstrings twanged, go to the Tacoma Park Elementary School and listen to the children read Martin Luther King's speech. That will make you cry. If nothing else makes you cry, that will make you bring a tear to your eye. Thank you.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thanks. We're only a couple of weeks into the expanded food waste collection for composting program, and I've already had a number of people tell me how much they're pleased with the program, that they can participate in it. So that's a good thing. Thought I'd share that without naming names. I want to thank the city manager and the Public Works Director, Darryl Braithwaite, for an update on preparations for the implementation of the Safe Grow Zone ordinance, which starts applying to commercial pesticide applicators on March the 1st. And I have one question for the city manager for response now or at the next meeting. Councilmember Simmons mentioned that one of the Martin Luther King Day service projects is cleanup of the wooded area off Darwin Avenue. I wanted to know about the status of dog park development. Thank you.
And I wanted to let folks know that I had a real good meeting with the Safe Roadways Committee. I know they've been scheduling all the council to attend one of their meetings, and it was very productive and very helpful. And it was a good use of all of our time to talk about issues of concern about everything that's in their purview, pedestrian safety, transportation, transit. And I encourage any of my colleagues who haven't scheduled their time with the Safe Roadways Committee to make sure to do that. And I also just want to bring to everybody's attention that I know that a number of potholes have been appearing in the last short period of time. All of the ones I've seen so far have been on state highways, but I wondered if the city manager, the deputy city manager, wanted to share any information on the best thing for people to do when they have a question about a pothole and want to make sure that somebody is addressing it, whether it's a state highway or a city road, should they contact us for all of them, and we'll call State Highway? Is that the best way to do it?
I know in response to a few back and forths that I saw today, our Public Works Director contacted SHA Maintenance Office and inquired about how to make a claim, which I think on state highways is probably the best way to approach that. And so they gave us a number, which I will send out to all the council after this, a 1-800 number, as well as a contact at State Highways where you can make that claim. I know also that our Public Works Director, I guess, reached out to a few other folks in the county to see if there's some additional follow-up that we might be able to do. And I can give, when I sent out the email, I'll also give you an update on that as well.
Okay, but.
If I might go to, if you go on the website for Carroll State Highway, it has Contact Us, and you call it up, and it has both an emergency number, or it has an online form. For potholes, use the emergency number. You just call it if it's on a state highway. It's very helpful to do that. It's also useful to let the Public Works Department know in case there's some kind of intermediary things, just so they're familiar that something is out there if they need to go out and put some patch or a cone or something until State Highway gets there. They can do that, but State Highway tends to be very responsive to those emergency phone calls.
So I know that people have called attention to some potholes on New Hampshire Avenue and also on the Carroll Avenue Bridge. I don't know what else there is, but I'm sure there are.
I don't think the Carroll Avenue Bridge is going to make it through this winter.
Mayor Williams, just one of those set of potholes are the ones right by the construction down at CVS. Yeah, I reported those.
If you're talking about Maple and Carroll, yeah, there's almost trenches there, and that's in the District of Columbia. And a number of people, including myself, have interacted with the DC authorities. I will actually credit former council member Jim Douglas for reaching out to, first, District Department of Transportation, and then to a Tacoma, DC resident who's in with the district government to get this filled with a temporary patching material. But we expect that to wear away pretty quickly, so it's an ongoing battle, and they've already addressed those potholes twice, and I'm sure will have to do it again before too long. But that spot at Maple and Carroll is in the district.
Sounds like it's a veritable cornucopia of potholes this week. Any other council comments? Okay, we'll move on to city manager's comments.
Thank you. First, I guess in response to a question last week, I think from councilmember Smith about, and perhaps other council members, about some challenges with RideOn. Our deputy city manager has reached out to some folks in RideOn and has an update on that.
Just briefly, councilmember Smith had indicated that several routes have had a number of complaints and problems with timeliness, with accuracy of the apps that provide information, and with some questions about bus stops. I did talk to several folks at RideOn. They have sent me a large stack of the emails and responses that they've been providing to residents on this, and interested in trying to keep us posted on how they're maintaining stuff. They do have an operator that's been out on the site several times to monitor improvements, or to hope for improvements, and identify any problems. But we were happy to hear that RideOn Chief Carolyn Biggins is interested in coming to the city council and talking a little bit about their service here and some of these changes. And so it looks like sometime perhaps in January or February, it would be, I think, a very positive thing to have Ms. Biggins here.
Great.
Glad to hear that.
Also, just wanted to give a sort of a quick update on the Parkview Towers project, which I know many of you all have heard about over the past couple of weeks. We, I guess the first sort of point of departure is that we put together a legal memo, which I believe has actually been distributed to many of the residents, or at least a summary version of that was made available, which talked a little bit about some of the potential remedies or options that residents have as it relates to many of the situations that they were referring to. I know also, and again, thanks, I think, in large part to some of the discussions that the council and city staff have had with MHP, the owner, as well as the entity that leads the property management of that apartment building. They have finalized their relocation strategy for many of the residents that had been a sort of a point of contention, because what they had been doing up till now was really entering a lot of tenants' apartment units, and there were some challenges that they even acknowledged as it relates to the manner in which they were doing that. They had a meeting with some of the residents on December 30th, specifically, I guess, the top two floors, advising them that they were going to be, in 30 days, which would be January 30th, moving them to vacant units that would be, that are in the apartment building, with the idea being they were going to move them to vacant units and then work on their unit in particular, doing, I guess there's some carpet, some wall, and maybe some kitchen and bathroom, depending upon the unit. And then as soon as that renovation work was done, they were going to be moving them back to their original unit. So if you had a unit that was 11:05 before, you would be relocated to a vacant unit, which is habitable. They would work on that unit, and then they would move you back to your individual unit. So I know at first there was some discussion of perhaps having to move tenants. So, I know at first there was some discussion of perhaps having to move tenants outside of the building, but they have figured out a mechanism by which they can move people to vacant units on a temporary basis and then move them back once their renovations have been complete. They intend to continue throughout the building, doing two floors at a time. They think that it will take what they hope is about 30 days to do the renovations for each of the two floors. So, they'll continue 10 and 11, and then they'll go down to 9 and 8, and so forth. And so, they believe that they will be done with the entire building, major unit renovations, by the end of June of this year, which I think, you know, at least does one thing, which is to give us a little bit more certainty about the schedule under which they were contemplating previously. And it's not really actually so much focused at us, but obviously making sure that the tenants are aware of what the schedule is and when people will be coming into their units. As I understand, as of December 12th of last year, there was no more really entry into tenants' units for major substantial work. I know that, again, had been another point of contention up until then, but the MHP had determined that they were going to stop doing that on December 12th and really try to figure out what their relocation strategy is, which is why they had the December 30th meeting. There had been, I think, just a question I'd gotten from one council member about vacancies, just looking at some previous vacancies. In short, and in talking to MHP, they have kept purposely a number of units for the last year vacant because they didn't know how they were going to be able to do their renovation schedule. So, I think right now, they said that they've got about 24 units, and again, it's 125-unit apartment building. And if I—as I asked them for some more information around vacancies in their past, it looks like their vacancies have been fairly similar from July 2009 to July 2010. It was about 20 vacancies or 16 percent vacancy for the building. In 2011, it was about 19 units, and it's important to note that in 2010, it was before MHP actually purchased the property. Vacancy in 2011 looked pretty low. I guess MHP tried hard to put as many people as possible in the units, and then really for the last year, they've been trying to keep units vacant as folks have moved out purposely because they were going to be going through the larger-scale renovation. So, that's sort of the operational side. I know that the tenants themselves have some additional decisions to make around reapplying as a tenant association, which I know some of our tenant organizing folks have been involved in helping them think through some of their options as it relates to that. And I, having spoken a little bit to some of our tenant landlord folks, I know that we're getting significantly fewer issues coming from residents over the past—I call it—two weeks to four weeks, partially probably because of holiday, but also because I don't think they're going into the units nearly as much as they had been. We did get a report of an elevator that had had some problems, but that thus far has been fixed. And so, you know, going forward, we just continue to and will continue to interact with MHP and obviously make our tenant landlord folks available for residents or anybody else who has any particular problems.
And is there also some information on assistance they're providing to tenants with the moving units?
That MHP is providing?
MHP, yes.
MHP has said that they are going to, I think, do a few things. One is that they're going to—they mentioned that they're going to videotape individual units before the move so that they—and the tenant has some comfort as to the condition of their unit before the renovation and then the condition of their unit after the renovation. They're asking for tenants to go through a process of thinking about the kinds of things that they would need in their temporary units. They're going to be shrink wrapping the larger furniture items so that those are not damaged. Tenants will not have access to their existing units while the renovation is happening, but MHP is going to be moving all tenants to the vacant units, to the habitable units, and then moving them back to their renovated units when the renovation is complete.
Councilmember Smith.
Has staff had any interaction with 7777 Maple Avenue, the Essex House? They're going to have a renovation that's going to be similar to the one at Parkview. So, let's try to learn, you know, what we have from this situation and apply it to Essex House because the tenants are very anxious about this renovation.
Even if we wanted to maybe set up some sort of meeting with the tenant association president or something like that to have them meet with our tenant landlord folks just to make sure that there's at least a clear line of communication for any potential issues, absolutely we can do that.
I'll give you some contact information after tonight's meeting.
Councilmember Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. I think everyone can agree that the situation as it was going was very horrible and a great hardship to the tenants. But I really appreciate the way that this has progressed. I appreciate the work that staff has put into this in trying to reach a much better plan for the renovations. And I also want to thank the Montgomery Housing Partnership for the attention that they gave to this. It's unfortunate that this really horrible situation came to the council so late and after so many months of a bad situation, but I think I'm very glad to see the way the staff has responded to this, and I appreciate that, Mr. Kenner. And like I said, I think Montgomery Housing Partnership has readily admitted the difficulties that they found themselves in. A lot of it to do with the nature—the renovations turned out to be much more extensive than they originally planned. But I think it's also important to thank the tenants of the Parkview Towers apartments and—for bringing it to the council and also for the way they have worked together to address this situation. I'm feeling comfortable that we're on the right path now, but I know that some of the tenants that have had to go through this may not feel the same way. So, I encourage any of you that harbor some bad feelings about the situation that you had to go through, I encourage you to, you know, look into whatever recourse that you feel would be—would help you to reach satisfaction with that. But if there are any new issues that come up, I encourage you to call me and/or the tenant organizers or the Housing Department here at the city. Certainly want you to work through the management office at the apartment building and with the Montgomery Housing Partnership management, and I would trust that you would do that first before escalating it to the city. But please know that we—all of us—are interested in making sure that this is resolved and you have a safe and secure home. Thank you.
Councilmember Daniels, comment.
Thank you, Mayor. I may have mislistened. They've dissolved their tenant association at Parkview or they're—
They, as I understand, their tenant association license effectively had an expiration date, so they just needed to reapply for it. So, it did not dissolve, no.
Is it—okay, so it's going—
It just needs to reapply for—to be recognized.
Reapply, and is there someone assisting those folks with making that reapplication?
There is. We have both community organizers as well as staff in our tenant landlord shop that helps with that.
Yeah, because I think a whole lot of what happened there was—how do I say this Misinformation, you know, a lack of communication, people not knowing where to go. And that was what was most appalling to me, that these are folks who lived in Tacoma Park, some of them for 20 years, and they didn't know where to go to get help, and they were afraid. And that really blew me away. Let's see. And as we're moving forward, we're treating the folks with—when I say "we," I'm using collective, all of us—with respect because I think that was part of the problem, was there was no respect there. They were treating them like bums. At least that's what it sounded like from this end. So, is that happening?
We have communicated—
I'll trash them with my cane.
We've communicated that message, I think, to Montgomery Housing Partnership, and I think that they understand that.
Okay, yeah, because I'm not going to put up with that kind of behavior from any adult person that's in a position of authority. I just, ah, yikes. Okay, oh, what's going on on the front lawn? We could put a garden in there. There's—you know, the whole front of it's missing. It's all dirt. Was there a boo-boo with the water system or something?
That's part of the renovations. They had replaced lines there, and so they've got it dug up. I'm not sure what all the nature of the changes are, but it is—they did tell me it was part of the renovation.
Okay, can you talk to somebody and ask them if they want to put a garden there?
Sure, we could talk to them.
Because that's—it's a great place. I always wanted the garden to go there in the front, on that piece of property, which is sitting there. You know, there are no toys, no playthings for children, but we could put a great, great garden for them. I mean, for them to produce food. They all know how to—they all know how to grow food, I guarantee you.
I'm on the job right now.
Okay, thank you.
I will note that I've noticed kids playing games with a ball on that area a lot.
Yeah, well, over a little bit more to the left they play, but right in the front, it's good.
Do you have anything else to update us on? Okay, I think so. We've covered that. You have something, Councilmember Grimes? The next item is adoption of minutes. We have one set of minutes from last week, January 6th.
Move it.
It's been moved. Somebody like to second it?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it unanimously. The minutes have been approved. So, we will now go to our regular meeting agenda, and the first item is a resolution adopting a hazard mitigation plan. Does somebody—maybe the city manager just want to give a brief recap on this one?
Yes, we—I think—introduced this last week. It's—the county, again, has already approved at the county level, as well as having FEMA approve their countywide hazard mitigation plan. In conversations with the county, they would like for all municipalities to approve the plan as well in order to be eligible for FEMA funds, remediation funds is one positive attribute as it relates to municipalities. Approving the plan, we had noted to them that there were a few either inconsistencies or minor factual corrections that needed to be made. They have already approved the plan and said that they can—they can't make the changes now, and we've encouraged them to make the changes as soon as possible or when they revise the hazard mitigation plan. So, this action is to approve the plan subject to notation of some of the inconsistencies that we had noted last week.
And so, this resolution takes care of notification of exactly what it is?
Exactly.
Okay. Would somebody like to move adoption of this resolution?
Moved.
Second?
Been moved by Councilmember Grimes, seconded by Councilmember Mayo. Is there council discussion on this item? Senior discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, passes unanimously. The next item is the First Reading Ordinance remanding the City of Tacoma Park Police Employee Retirement Plan to change options available to retirees. We had a briefing on this last week from HR Director Ms. Blackwell. Is there anything additional you want to reiterate this evening on this item?
Good evening, everyone. Since the last meeting that was held, the police officers did vote on whether or not they wanted to go ahead and make that change, and they did vote that they did want to go ahead and make the change in the retirement option.
Would somebody like to move the First Reading Ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
I'll leave it to the clerk to decide which of three voices moved it. Councilmember Daniels Cohen seconded it. Is there any council discussion on this First Reading Ordinance, remanding the retirement plan? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it unanimously. And the final voting item on this evening's regular meeting agenda is a resolution providing for an appointment to the Emergency Preparedness Committee. Would somebody like to move that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Smith, seconded by Councilmember Daniels Cohen. Any council discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, passes unanimously. We will now move to work session. We have two items. The first is the Crossroads Farmers Market request to close Ann Street between Hammond Avenue and University Boulevard on Wednesdays from 9:00 in the morning until 4:00 in the afternoon from May to November inclusive. And I know that we have some folks from the Crossroads Farmers Market here. Is somebody going to introduce this first?
Sure. I'll go ahead and introduce it, and then I'll turn it over to some of the Crossroads folks to follow up with some specifics. The Crossroads Market has been operating since 2007, again, providing fresh foods and other fresh produce from local vendors in that area. It's been operating on Wednesdays from 11:00 a.m. to 3:30—or sorry, to 3:00 p.m. May through November in the parking lot behind the office building at 7676 New Hampshire Avenue. This site has presented some challenges in terms of customer safety and market visibility. There is a note off of New Hampshire Avenue, sort of a partial wall that makes the markets somewhat difficult to visually see off of New Hampshire Avenue. As such, the market is looking for a new location for the 2014 season and has considered, I know, a number of different options, which I'm assuming some of the Crossroads folks will address. One option that they have—one proposal that they have come up with is to close one block of Ann Street at the intersection of University Boulevard to Hammond Avenue. One exit lane would be kept open to allow traffic from the parking lot of 1021 University to exit and continue southwest on the Ann Street, but no traffic would be able to go during that time on Wednesdays to University. We had asked the police department to do some traffic counts just so that, I think, the city could get a better understanding of whether we were going to have significant either school bus, delivery truck, and/or just vehicular traffic that would have—that would be impacted potentially. So, we had some traffic counts that went out on Monday, Wednesday, and—Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, just to check not only the day that the market was, but just to give us some additional data. And what we came up with is that there are no—and we also had the police check with Montgomery County Schools, there are no existing school bus routes that are particularly impacted by the closing of that—of Ann Street. There was no notation for either of those three days of any potential delivery trucks, and traffic counts were—in the police's words—relatively low during those days. It's not a major thoroughfare that is used by any particular business and/or commuter route to access University Avenue or to come off of University Avenue. As such, maybe I'll allow some of the Crossroads folks to come up and talk a little bit more about what they're envisioning for the site.
And while they're coming up, I'll just note that we have a letter from Councilmember Schultz, who basically lays out that he has worked with them and agrees with the proposal. Welcome.
Thanks. So, for the record, I'm just going to say a few words. My name's Lori Charcuti, and I'm the president of the Board of Crossroads Farmers Market and Crossroads Community Food Network. And I just want to create a little bit of context. I think the council is pretty familiar with Crossroads Farmers Market, and you've been very supportive, and so thank you for your support over the years. I think you're familiar with it to some extent from the grant-funded subsidized side of it, which is that you've provided funding for the Fresh Checks Program, and you've provided funding also for our school-based programming. But the market is a market, and so part of what we're going to talk to you tonight about is the need for sustainability of it as a market, because if it doesn't succeed and sustain as a market, then the other programs that we add on to it can't function. A couple of things I do want to highlight about the market. As Brian said, I think it's—we started in 2007. We were the first in the country to double the value of federal benefits, and at the time, it was considered something of a crazy idea, and it's now considered sort of the gold standard. And so, there's a lot of— And so there's a lot of things that we've tried to do here, taking farmers' markets, which I think everyone understands the economic value to farmers and local economic development and environmental importance, and health benefits. But traditionally, they've often been in higher-income areas, and so Crossroads has been a leader in modeling how one does farmers' markets in low-income areas, and really making sure that fresh fruits and vegetables are accessible to low-income individuals, but also the other benefits of the farmers' market, of knowing your farmer and getting to know and ask where your food came from, and creating economic opportunities for low-income individuals who are vendors to sell. So all of those are really important things, and in order for that to happen, we need to have a long-term, sustainable market from a business perspective. And so the amazing staff of Crossroads Community Food Network has been doing the research and talking to the neighbors, and they'll talk about why this location is ideal in terms of the business sustainability, and answer some technical questions.
Okay. I'm Michelle Dudley. I've worked with Crossroads since 2008. I had the experience of managing Crossroads Market when we were located on Holton Lane in 2008 and 2009, so there was traffic that passed on the one side of Holton Lane while we managed the market. This potential to be on Ann Street, although it may not be a perfect one, and there are some concerns, it is like 100 times better than the experience on Holton Lane. So I'll start with that. We have gone ahead and looked at other locations, and I can address that more if you have questions on that. But in terms of the Ann Street location, we feel that, and Kristy, feel free to jump in, the advantages, number one, are like the visibility. We're not visible from New Hampshire Avenue right now. People that are intending to come to the market have time, have a hard time finding us. We will attract more cash-paying customers and have better income on our vendor sales fees, which we charge 5% to our vendors, if we have more cash-paying customers, and more customers in general who are able to come to the market, see the market, and shop there, that it doesn't have to be so intentional. Currently, the majority of our shoppers are federal nutrition benefit clients, and at least 50% of those that come to Crossroads are WIC users. The market has been located outside of the largest WIC clinic in Maryland for the last couple of years, that we've been at the 7676 location. Moving to Ann Street, we would just be a three-to-five-minute walk, maybe less, from the current location. So we would not lose those customers, and we would still be able to, be able to serve those customers, being in close proximity to the office. We'd be near popular shopping centers. Again, I said, we would remain in the Crossroads neighborhood and not have to really shift our customer base. We are looking at other locations that would drastically shift who's coming to our market. And being at Ann Street is in line with a vendor survey that we conducted in the fall, and their main request was to be more visible. A lot of them saw a drastic decline in sales in the last year or two that we have been in the back parking lot, and their second priority was to be in close proximity to the current location, to maintain the customers that we do have. So those are some advantages that we're looking at, if you have any more. Actually, one more. We are developing a partnership currently, which you may have seen by, I don't know who saw the letter, from the manager of Expo E-Mart. That is the grocery store that's in the Safeway parking lot. They, we're looking forward to developing that partnership in greater, to a greater extent. They've, they've expressed interest in being a vendor. Their onsite bakery at the market this year, that would fill a vendor void that we had this past year, and we'd like to coordinate with them, possibility for paying to use their bathroom facilities and other things as well. So I was asked to talk about potential problems, should I, of Ann Street. Roz sent me a note about that. Shall I jump into that?
Go ahead, yes.
Okay. Okay, yeah, it won't take long. Thanks, Lori. Let's see. Yeah, the exit lane that is being discussed, so that customers of the tenants at 1021 University Boulevard, they, we are not intending to block that. That is the main request of the property owner at 1021. And we would be working in conjunction with Public Works and the Police Department to make sure that this could be as smooth transition as possible. You can see maybe on the draft of the vendor map what that speaks to.
If I could just, so you all have spoken with the property owner there?
Yes, we have.
And coordinated a little bit on exit and what that looks like, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we had a meeting right before the holiday with Fred Schultz and the property owner, as well as Sergeant Gilbert. So we were all there to discuss her concerns. We would be posting signage there, making sure that our customers weren't parking in their parking lot for that building, and being vigilant that we weren't taking their parking spots, and that their customers could leave the property in a safe manner. So we have discussed that. Potential problems, parking, we are looking at kind of splitting up, having vendor parking be, a few vendors being able to park on-site, a few vendors possibly parking further up on Ann or on Hammond, doing an offloading kind of deal, as opposed to working right out of their trucks. And the vendors are willing to do this, to have, to have a better site where they could work.
I know also, we asked the police to just to take a look at what the parking situation looked like, particularly during the day, and just upon really visual inspection, especially on Hammond Avenue, they found there to be relative, there was availability of parking during the day. Obviously, that begins to change a little bit as it gets closer to 4:00 and 5:00 o'clock in the afternoon, but I think that the idea is that the market's going to stay open roughly from 9:00 or 9:30 until about 3:30 or 4:00 o'clock.
Market hours would be 11:00 to 3:00, with a 9:00 a.m. setup and a 4:00 clean, 4:00 vacate the premises. Let's see, we'll continue to encourage our shoppers to walk. We see a great deal of our shoppers coming by foot, so we don't see that being a problem. We have as a line item in our 2014 market budget to run two public buses, or two market transportation buses, so that we can minimize any senior customers in Tacoma Park, and potentially Prince George's County that would be driving. That is a service that we had always offered in the past, but didn't offer this past year due to budget, but we are going to bring that back. We found that our senior customers were coming regardless of the market transportation that we had offered, but they were coming in ones or twos or threes, and having a lot of, needing a lot of parking spaces at the previous site. I think, yeah, good time for questions.
I have two quick questions, and I'll get to my colleagues. For the property at 1021 University, does, is there another access point to the parking there? It looks like, but it's off the edge of our map, that they can enter from University Boulevard?
Yes.
So that they're not going to be coming into that parking lot out of that marked exit? They're not going to have two-way traffic past the market, they're just exiting?
Exactly. They would just be exiting, and they can access on University Boulevard.
And do we know what the timeframe is on the transit center? Because you're kind of right across from what's going on there, and I know they've been adding basically a new access point, a new crossway there on University with new traffic lights going in.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, but it's, but it's within sightlines of Ann Street, and I'm wondering about potential, basically, new potential customer base from that parking lot across the street. Well, now, it appears have better access, but I'm not sure when they're going to activate those lights. Do we know?
We'll have to find out.
Because they, the lights have now been installed.
I have not heard, I have not heard any timeframe with that. I have been in conversation with Roz Kriegsbee and others who have told me that that won't affect us in a negative, in a negative way.
I'm assuming it'll be positive, because you'll have better access from that whole quadrant.
I like that.
Okay, Councilmember Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all for not just coming here tonight and sharing your plans with us, but also all the great work you've done with this market. Michelle, from, you know, your many years of experience there with the market, it's really been impressive how the, how the whole organization has really grown so much. It's every year, it's leaps and bounds ahead of the previous year, so thank you for your dedication, and all of you. My only question with this was parking, and you got into that some, but is the, is the parking lot, the large parking lot next door, an option? Have you talked with the center owner there to see if that's a possibility?
We, we are taking small steps at, at that conversation. That was a site that we had hoped for as our number-one market. Our number-one wish for a market site is the center of the Safeway parking lot. They have a non-competition clause in their lease, and they're not willing to work with us on that, which is why we were led to Ann Street. We are in communication.
But yet the people you would be competing with are the one that's going to partner with you, the eco-market.
Right.
Just curious.
I believe that they see us, at this point, as an asset, and someone that would be bringing more customers their way. The Expo E-Mart is not very well-attended or well-used, and the dozen times that I've been there, it's, there's not a ton of people there.
I'm just wondering if they wouldn't be more, more happy to have you there than unhappy to have you in the parking lot, and that maybe it's just the property owner himself who is reluctant.
Yeah.
Yeah, that maybe the eco-market might be an ally in approaching the, the property owner.
We, we are in communication with the manager there, and she's excited about our presence and the potential of, of bringing more customers. In terms of using parking spaces there, we haven't confirmed that, but we always encourage our shoppers at the market to
Park legally.
Be patrons, to park legally, and to be patrons of other local businesses. And in surveys that we've done in past years, we do find that our, our market shoppers are doing their, their weekly shopping in the neighborhood when they're there.
Right. Okay, yeah, I certainly have no problem at all. I mean, I visited Market when it was on Holton Lane, and as, looking at that, you might say that, no, it's a bad idea, but it worked fine. And I guess it was your, you were kind of the lead at that time, Michelle, and you made it work. It was a, what one would say was a difficult situation, but it didn't seem that way as a market visitor. I never got run over or threatened by a vehicle, so I was happy.
We were happy about that, yes.
And, and the whole thing. I mean, it didn't seem to be a real disruption there. So I have no problem with this. I'm hopeful that, that one day, if not this year, that, you know, the local businesses will see that the great benefit you bring to them, and be more open to your expanding into that larger area. I, I guess, you know, one question I have for the city manager is, you know, this relocation is kind of significant, because they've always been on New Hampshire Avenue in the past, and is there any assistance we can give the market with signage to help direct some of the traffic off of New Hampshire Avenue over to the market?
We've had some preliminary conversations, both with the police and with our Housing and Community Development staff, and I think, I think that there are definitely some options that we can pursue, which will help not only with alerting people to when the street will be closed, but also continuing in terms of marketing or signage for the market itself.
Yeah, I'm thinking along the New Hampshire Avenue corridor to tell people how to find the market now, that they're been used to in the past. Thank you.
And I think your, your point about threat versus opportunity for the other local businesses is, is an experience that the original Tacoma Park Farmers Market had in setting up in Old Town. There was some original perception that it might be a problem for the existing businesses, and that it became apparent that it was a benefit to the existing businesses. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. Just a few questions. One, what is the mix of number of Tacoma Park residents compared to those from Prince George's County, or do you have those numbers?
Yes, we do. I believe they're, they're 50/50, or, would you like? Okay, do you want to? I don't, I don't have them in front of me. See, we track our senior customers and our WIC customers and everyone based on counties, so the overall is what I'm, I'm lacking right now, but it's been pretty comparable, maybe like a 60/40, or 50, kind of 50/50 over the years, kind of like shifting.
We can get those numbers broken down.
Yeah, we can definitely get them.
Even broken down by seniors and WIC.
Does Prince George's County provide any grant assistance to the market?
Yes, it does.
Yeah. We get a small amount of funding from their county council, and then we have applied for a couple of grants, and we've gotten a couple of grants in the past from different funding sources they have.
Why is the market only once a week?
Yeah, that's a great question. We've considered what that would look like, to make it twice a week, but most farmers' markets we know run once a week. Our vendors that we work with are doing other markets pretty much every other day of the week, but especially weekends.
And finally, are you offering the other storefronts an opportunity to sell goods at the market? Like, you're, you're working with Expo, right?
Right.
And they're going to sell baked goods, but are you going to any of the other storefront owners?
Not necessarily. We're a producer-only market, and the Expo E-Mart has an in-house bakery, so they would sell what they produce there. We basically have our vendor lineup of other producers. We were over in Langley Park today and had a local artisan talk to us about maybe selling, being a participant at the market this year, and we are, we are open to that, but we are not actively recruiting at the moment, because we're not sure what sort of space we have to work with
Okay.
On Ann Street, but, you know, we're open to more community partnerships all the time.
All right, because I would think that some of those storefronts would like to see another avenue to sell their goods, and that, that's what you guys could provide. But thank you very much for coming out tonight.
Thanks for having us.
Councilmember Grimes?
Thanks. I just thought I'd bring up a bit of history, which is that there was a midweek farmers' market at Tacoma Junction in the city lot. I don't think it lasted more than a couple of years, and it was Wednesday afternoons, as I recall, and that was a problematic time in terms of drawing customers. The junction is better than it was then, but I, what I want to say is that, based on local experience, this is a different location, but based on Tacoma Park experience, it can be problematical, and it's great that you've succeeded with that Wednesday date.
And I'll just add, you went into a little bit of the history of the market, and it reminded me that John Hyde was instrumental in making the market happen, and I wanted to remind folks of that and recognize him. We lost him a few years ago, and it was a good loss to the city. Any other council questions? So I think we're going to have a resolution coming forward next week, and we will hopefully approve that and make the new Ann Street location a reality. Thanks very much for coming.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And we have one additional item this evening, and that's the legislative update.
Good evening. The legislature is starting up, and thanks for those who participated in the opening. We just got, actually this afternoon, some update on, on some of our, the bills that may be of interest at Tacoma Park, and so I've just glanced through them, and we were actually in Annapolis today for a different purpose, and so I've We were actually in Annapolis today for a different purpose, and so I've not had a lot of time to go through them. There are a couple items that I do want to mention. This evening, HB 131 was introduced. That's our Tacoma Park bill related to the alcoholic beverage Class B on and off sale. So that, that was introduced today. There doesn't seem to be any problem with that. The MC 514, which has to do with the archery hunting, I need to bring back some information, and I'm hoping to send some things out to you during the week, so that perhaps a resolution could be considered for next week. It does get considered by the Land Use and Transportation Committee of the Montgomery delegation on the 23rd. So, if the city council wants to take a position or make a recommendation, it's most useful if we could do that next week. The, the list of some of the bills that are coming up are of interest. The only bill that has a hearing this coming week is one that's, that we've supported in the past, but it's not particularly important. It's one of Alcar's street lighting bills, but this has to do with the, making sure that permanent luminaires are environmentally better than they are. And so, we'll submit some, a written statement about that, but it's a fairly traditional, yes, have good environmental aspects to the, to the required-
And it's the identical bill as last year, and we supported that one as well.
That's right. The, the more significant bill about, about streetlight purchases and things, we still need to go through a little bit. And he has submitted that. It's not been introduced yet, I don't think formally, so I don't think it has a number yet. There's a couple that are just of interest. I just want to let people know some of the stuff that's, that's being proposed. There's a, a bill HB 62, which would allow a person who has a license to carry a regulated firearm, including a concealed firearm, if you have that license issued by Delaware, Pennsylvania, Virginia, or West Virginia, that it would also be valid in Maryland, which may cause some excitement. There's a bill related, another kind of public safety-related bill, which is requiring law enforcement officers to wear a video camera, but not have audio. So there's some interesting aspects to that. There is a, a bill that would require that if a speed camera ticket were issued erroneously, that the person responsible for that speed camera ticket would have to pay $125 to the person to whom the citation was issued. So, that was of interest to me. And, yeah, so we'll add those into all of the regular standard bills that have to do with the environmental safety of the bay, the interest in trying to either turn over stormwater rules or improve them. There's a lot of, a lot of those kinds of things going on. I think the more serious discussions come with budget, and especially with highway user revenue. And we are making some strong inquiries as to what, what we can do this session with highway user revenue. I don't know, Mayor, did you want to mention anything about that, or, did you talk to Michelle today about that?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
But I know that the, what we do on highway user revenues really depends on whether the governor includes anything in his budget on that, and we'll know about that very soon.
Okay.
And that will, that will set the course for whether we're trying to protect what he's got in his budget, get the legislature to change the budget to add something in, or exactly what it is that we're going to be doing.
Okay. As a reminder, this past year, the amount of highway, highway user revenue we got as a regular payment from the established formula, which was much reduced established formula, was in the $90,000 range, and we got a one-time payment of $250,000, $280,000, which was tied to kind of make up for the fact that the formula wasn't doing what it needed to do. If we do not have a, an improvement in the formula, we're just going to get that $90,000 next year.
And, and that $90,000 is about 10% of what we had been getting before the problem.
It's, it's much less, yes. And so, you know, I think that that's, as we, as we start thinking about what we want to do with budget, you know, $250,000 can go a long ways, and we'd like to get it, so.
And that $250,000 only takes us to 50% of what we were getting.
That's true. I don't have any other particular items, I just wanted to let you know about what's going on so far on my list, but if you have some concerns or things you want me to follow up on, I'd be happy to hear about them.
And if I can just follow up a little bit with a couple of the things that I know from being in Annapolis on opening day. The, the alternate years as to who, which house considers the budget first, and this year goes to the Senate first. And so that will proceed once the budget gets released. It may, I, I'm not sure the date, it may be this week, or it may be early next week, that the budget gets released. Councilmember Smith and I spent the day in Annapolis last Wednesday. He joined me at the Legislative Committee, and we, I think it was very instructive and some, some real good discussion. One of the, I, I had promised to send all the information that I get from MML about those bills to my colleagues. I remembered to do that today, so you got a couple emails from me with those links. One of the things that was not in there that the, that the committee discussed was a bill, Senate Bill 44, introduced by Senator Colburn, and it's one that MML took no position on, but we had some lengthy discussion about it. It's proposing to add to the noxious weeds that are currently listed in state law, they wanted to add what's commonly called reed grass. And my understanding about that is that it's a very invasive grass. Basically, if you have any, any watery area, any moist area, it's the first thing that pops up in that area, and it's almost impossible to eradicate. People talked about taking bulldozers and scooping it all out, and it still came back. It sounds like it's as tough, if not tougher, to get rid of than bamboo. And, and this bill would impose penalties on anybody who did not eliminate it. The reason MML took no position was that it was essentially an unfunded mandate, it would be impossible to get rid of, and municipalities could be facing huge bills for trying to get rid of what's basically the grass that you see whenever you see wetland areas. So, just wanted to let people know that that had come up in addition to what I sent out. I also had a chance to talk with Montgomery County Council President Craig Rice about our concerns about tax duplication, and I'm waiting to hear back from him on what might be happening there as well. I wonder if Councilmember Smith wants to make any comments about the day in Annapolis.
Thank you. I had an opportunity to talk to Senator Raskin, and he did mention that bringing a bill to legalize marijuana is, is real. The one thing that I would ask you, Deputy City Manager Lalo, to consider is, is there money going to be available for municipalities? And will that money come to us directly, or do we have to come up with some type of formula with the state to get the money that is due us? I don't want to-
For, for a particular topic, or just in general?
For-
For marijuana?
Marijuana. Because, you know, they're looking at modeling the bill after Colorado.
Okay.
And according to a piece on 60 Minutes, municipalities throughout the state have brought in just tremendous amounts of tax revenue. And I just want to make sure we don't have the same problem we have with tax duplication, that we are running around trying to figure out-
After the fact.
-how much money we're going to get, rather than this is what we're owed, and this is what the state gives us. But during the Legislative Committee meeting that MML hosted, there were two things that came to mind. One, the diversity of the state. I mean, there are very rural areas of Maryland, and their perspective is very different than what is important to us and what is important to major cities like Baltimore. And another thing that stood out is how members think about the body first, rather than what would be best, would be in their best interest. And making sure that they can move bills, that they know that they can get support through all of MML, rather than just saying, I'm going to support a bill that they know that's going to die. But it was very good.
Yeah, the, one, one particular instance of that was when the representative on the committee from the city of Baltimore spoke up, saying that he was in, that the, that bill would be of great interest and great value to his constituents in South Baltimore.
Right.
But that he could see that from a, from a overall municipal perspective, it would do some harm to others, and he, therefore, he didn't think we should take a position on it even though it would benefit Baltimore. It was basically, you know, if, if Baltimore's going to get that, we're going to have to fight for it.
I think, one of the things that has, has become more clear, more and more clear to me is that, you know, it is very important, obviously, to work with MML, but sometimes there are some ways that we can forge our own kinds of alliances, and even though the state's very, has a great deal of diversity, for example, if we're looking at legislation that may assist us in economic development efforts, we could partner with Cumberland, and we can partner with other kinds of places around the state that might be able to get us through and over something than just Montgomery delegation, or kind of the standard lines of connections. So I, you know, I think some interest in trying to build some of those connections, and the, and the interest, and the help that you can do when you actually talk to those folks, it goes a long way when it gets down to some of our bills.
And, and I think last Wednesday was very beneficial for just that type of discussion, because it was the, by far, the largest number of room, largest number of people I've seen in the room for a Legislative Committee meeting, with a number of people who were down there for the opening session and for the MML reception. There were probably 50 people in the room, and they, there was good attendance from, there were two people, two elected officials from Cumberland. They don't normally make a three and a half hour drive to get to the committee meeting, and then three and a half hours back. So it was a good opportunity to meet with people from around the state, and there was really good attendance at the reception, with a lot of, a lot of the governor's staff there, and a number of county officials as well.
One of the things I did want to mention was that, I'm trying to think which day it was, we had a meeting with the co-op and a representative from the Montgomery County Liquor Control Board staff, and had some discussions about what kind of options are available for them for selling beer and wine. I think it, it reiterated the difficulty of going, just trying to get something quickly through the legislative process, or that there's some special carve-out for them. Nevertheless, they are, there are some things that they're pursuing and looking into, and then they'll be getting back to us. So I just wanted to let you know that we have been meeting with them and, and trying to be helpful in that.
Is there any indication whether in the House of Delegates on marijuana legislation, Delegate Valeria will block it again?
I, I don't know, I have to ask.
And do we, I'm trying to think of what we've done in the past, and what the chances are of getting an update from our lobbyist in Annapolis during the session. Have we done it where she came in person? Have we, have we had her on the phone, or have we just gone, had, had the connection as she can during the day with you or with me, and then we report on that? Have we had an opportunity to have her in during session?
We haven't done it by phone, but we've, she's certainly come sometimes, she's happy to do that. I think, you know, there may be like some key times when we might want that.
I'm just trying to anticipate those key times, and think about what the possibilities are for-
Yeah, let me-
-having some direct interaction with her during the session.
Sure, I'm happy to, to ask that. I'm also working with our management assistant to have some ways to provide, share that information of, on the different bills and things in a handy way for you in advance of, so it's not all just me talking, but you have some, some helpful ways of keeping tabs of, of the things that we're pursuing. But I'll find out from Michelle.
And I know in the past, she's provided the, the whole spreadsheet tracking things that are of interest. And that reminded me that, I don't remember the date, but coming up in, I want to say early March, is the MML Montgomery Chapter Lunch in Annapolis, which is an opportunity, if people are free to go to that. I can come up with the date, but I think it's, it's a Thursday, or it's either late February or early March, and that's for anybody who has the opportunity to go during the middle of the day. Generally is from like 11:30 to 1:00, and it's a chance to talk with both legislative staff and officials about anything that's going on. And the timing is such that it tends to fall at a crucial point during the session, when there's a number of issues that we may want to follow up. Questions, comments?
Thanks very much.
Thank you, I think, I think that's it, and, and we'll continue to have legislative updates on every agenda during the session. And I think that takes care of our agenda this evening, and so we are adjourned.